We have a quorum present. Quorum is four. If everyone is ready, we can stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty, justice, and all. Indivisible, we forgot. Skip indivisible. Mr. Warren. So we have three matters on the agenda tonight. The first matter is the Duchess Day School request for a special permit. One of our members introduced herself in that matter. She's on the board of the Duchess Day School. So she's going to lead for this discussion. So the Duchess Day Schools recently purchased a single-family home that they want to use for faculty housing. The parcel's across the street, across the road on Route 343 from the school's campus. And who here is representing Duchess Day School? Can you come forward?
Yeah, sure.
You can pull up a chair.
Should I? I can sit here.
I don't know that the microphone will catch you as well. So maybe if you pull up a chair, it'll be better. And if you could just give us your name.
Yep. Hi, everyone. My name's Dominique Albano. I'm an attorney at Whitman, Osman, and Hanna. And I represent the Duchess Day School. Here today with Matthew Hurd, the headmaster of the Duchess Day School. And they own the property at 458 Route 343, across the strum, the Duchess Day School now. As you discussed, they're applying for a special use permit for an educational institutional use for faculty housing. So Mr. Hurd could live at the faculty housing and still participate easily with the Duchess Day School. And his family would be living there. He's not proposing any development to the site. It already has a single-family home. And as of right now, there are no physical changes that are going to be done to the property.
Okay. Aaron, do you have any comments?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. I think, you know, your code, because of what it says about educational institutions and faculty housing being part of that, I think they're, you know, doing the right thing and applying for a special use permit. It's a single-family home. It's going to remain that, just being used for an employee of the school. So everything, as far as code compliance, checks out. You have the ability to waive certain provisions of the code for a special permit plan, site plan, given that there's really nothing happening here other than occupancy of the house. It does require referral to the county because of its location and it's a site, it's a special permit for a non-residential use technically. So you can make that referral tonight. It also requires a public hearing. So while that referral's out, you can set the hearing for the next meeting. And it is a type-two seeker action.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a straightforward application. And I think one of the things that was also not added, but which is just conceptually important, is that it frees up an existing building at Duchess Day for educational uses. So it's not just a matter of adding living quarters for Mr. Hurd. It's actually the moving of headmaster quarters to a nearby location so an existing structure can be used for educational purposes.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
It's straightforward.
I have a question for my notes. Is he referred to county because of its, just because of its use?
It's within 500 feet of county road or state road.
It's a general municipal law, like 239.
239M referral.
And that's the one where usually they get back to us very quickly.
Yeah, they have 30 days. And, you know, usually it works out. But if there's going to be an issue where we have a hearing, you know, scheduled for less than 30 days, we can just ask them to, you know, give them a date that we need it by. They're usually pretty good about responding. And this is probably going to be a matter of local concern, checkbox, and not much else.
Okay. Yeah, it seems about as straightforward an application as we've gone yet. So I suppose we need a motion for seeker. So do we want to make a motion to so moved? And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And do we also need to make a motion for the county referral? Or do we just make that count?
To authorize the secretary to refer to the county. I was also going to ask, do we need to waive certain provisions of?
Oh, the site plan?
Yeah, if you're waiving certain provisions, just acknowledge that and include that in.
So normally, we would be getting, there would be site plan requirements. And that's what we're talking about waiving. Because there are no external renovations. This is just going to be a house that somebody's moving into.
Right. And so, I mean, the way that their letter presented it and how it summarized in my memo is Section 472 authorizes the planning board to waive selected site plan requirements for certain types of special permit applications. And similarly, Section 483 required plans provides that the planning board may waive any of the requirements of this section for specific applications that have a minimal impact on surrounding properties. So you can cite both 483 and 472 and waive.
So can I have a motion to waive the requirements of Section 472 as 483 permits?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then are we ready to put the matter on for a public hearing for next month as required? So we need a motion for that.
So moved.
Okay, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Just one question. How does the town handle public notices? Do we provide the list of 500, like the properties within 500 feet? Or does the?
Our secretary's not here today. But the way that it's working now is the notices are the responsibility of the applicant. Hopefully, we weren't off for too long. I don't know. I didn't see. I think so because I don't think he was on at all. Did anybody see Jim Cornell up there? Was he up there?
There was nobody up there.
Yeah. I didn't think he was on. Okay. Okay. So the next matter is the continuation of the workshops that we held in December, January, February, March, and they've been discussing construction of the new school on property located partly within the town of Washington and partly within the town of Clinton. The applicant also has an application for the zoning board for height variance. We've declared ourselves to be lead agency. The zoning board is an involved agency. And since the last meeting, the applicant has submitted a wetland application and has provided the results of a traffic study. In addition, our consultant, Steve Marino, conducted a site visit, and we all received that memo.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good for you. So we have seen the results of your traffic study. We have the wetland application. And we also received the memo from Steve Marino. Did you see the memo?
Yep, I saw that. Aaron checked it over and saw that.
Okay. So I guess we should start off with Aaron. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll pull up.
He's down.
So I used the, I think I used the February memo.
But he could have been knocked off. Like, he could have been on before.
I backed off that with new comments or any follow-up items. So the two issues really are, you know, the wetlands permit adequacy, like Steve's issues, if there are any, or his thoughts and next steps there. And the traffic issue, which I know the town of Clinton is interested in. So we could start with the wetlands. I think everybody's seen Steve's notes. He's of the opinion that what's happening here is pretty much a net positive for the site. They're moving the old, the building that's currently used as a school. They're removing a septic system from that area. They're going to be doing some work in the parking lot. They're also going to be adding stormwater management, which is not on-site currently right now. All the impervious runoff goes, makes its way toward that stream without any kind of control. In this case, they're formalizing the parking lot. They're going to pave it, curb it, stripe it, and also add in these infiltration chambers as a means to control. The runoff is going to come from that parking lot. And also, the school building is going to be a new impervious surface on the site as well as roof. So they're taking care of that issue. They're, I think the only comment Steve really had was, can we maybe add some vegetation along the edge of the stream to naturalize it more? Maybe it can serve more as a filtering for any water that does make its way there and just provide, you know, a nice habitat for whatever critters might be in there. So I don't know if he would want to see a planting plan for that. He usually does. We could ask him as a follow-up. He didn't really mention it in his memo.
He talked about two things. He talked about a no, I'm sorry. I spoke to him last week, so I'm not sure if that was in the memo, about a no-mow strip.
Yes.
And he also spoke about a planting plant. So those, we could do either or of those things potentially.
Yeah, I think we could, it's going to be discussed. And you can propose something that he can look at between now and the next meeting. And if he's okay with it, then it can be part of the site plan.
Sure, sure.
Just want to open discussion on that, on the wetland stuff first? And when you move to traffic next?
Yeah.
Anyone else want to?
I brought a, just a photo of the actual area. You know, if you guys want to pass it around. So the stream's running right there in here. You'll see just a line there where a stream's running down there. And this is kind of really how they've got it right now. So it's just kind of an open field with a couple of trees in the area.
Mowed right up to the stream.
Yeah, I would say because it goes down a hill and it gets a little bit marshy there. I'm going to say it's probably, my guess, they probably stopped mowing about 10 feet, probably from, just so they don't get the mower probably stuck in there or whatever. But there's a couple, I think, white pines that I'm seeing there. And then other than that, they do have a frisbee golf little setting, you know, around there.
It's a utility line, right?
I'm sorry?
It's a utility line, right?
It is utility line, yeah.
Existing, yeah.
Yeah, yep. So then we're not touching that one. We're going to leave that just as it is. I believe that's probably going to the pastor's house that goes after.
I think Steve Marino's letter was pretty straightforward. You know, we never like to see anybody go and disrupt anything that's within the setback from the protective waters. But when people make improvements to the site and the overall net benefit for the environment is positive, I think that's really the time that we make the consideration. So for me, I thought it was very straightforward. But I think Steve's recommendation, which he does on many, many similar situations, is that we do the no-mow strip. And not just for the mowers to not get stuck, but on purpose, we do it to keep machinery and other things away from there and preserve the filtration of the natural grasses. And then doing some native plantings around the area to improve the additional filtration. So I'm in favor of it because it's a net positive for the environment. All the non-permeable materials that are there with the existing, now not abandoned, but unused on-site. The moving of the septic, I think all those things are very positive. And the installation of a filtration system for stormwater, I think all those are very positive improvements to what is going on. So I'm in favor of it with these changes. I thought you'd let you mark out the no-mow strip and then make a plan for installing some.
Sure. I'm assuming on both sides of the stream running down through.
So you would make that a condition of the permit?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And you could also just make it, you could put it on the site plan and get it signed ultimately as well. So it's on there. Steve can look at it between now and that point, too, so if he's okay with what it says.
Yeah, I would recommend adding any landscaping or any conditions such as that as a note on the maps.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any comments?
I agree.
I agree.
So this does require referral to the CAC. So that can happen as well tonight. We could talk about the traffic next. So we, you have Lobella on board, who's obviously, you know, knows what they're doing with this. And we have folks in our office that just took a look at what they did. And there's a few notes that we provided in the memo. Mainly, I think it would benefit, and it wouldn't take a lot of work. It would just take a few hours of somebody's time to go out and actually just do an existing count the morning period, the afternoon period, and the evening. What do we have in here? The morning drop-off, the afternoon pickup, and the evening hour. Existing conditions counts for, you know, vehicles, buses, so that we get that baseline. And then they can use that trip generation that they did on that increment of students and just roll it out in a linear way, a 12 linear growth. I'm not the traffic engineer from my office, but I'm just relaying the comments. And that's commonly done. You take an existing count. We do a trip gen for what's coming. And then you just kind of compound it on to see what the future will show. And then that should do it. And we're not looking for like a traffic study at intersections around town. We're not looking for that. We're just trying to find the delta in trips.
Which would be the Monday through Friday morning and afternoon. This is when the drop-off, whether it's parents or buses.
I would pick one week, one day of school when you know it's in session and the middle of the week maybe would be good. And do those counts for the one-hour period each time. And that can establish the baseline. How many people are getting dropped off by car? How many buses are coming in?
I think what you're saying is there's not enough specificity in what, in the study that we got. It really was just an idea of how much the road, how many cars a road could handle.
Well, they used a trip generation rate that, one of our other concerns was that its sample size is kind of small for that use in the IT manual. It's a private school land use. And the sample size for, you know, where they take that rate from is from all over the country. And there wasn't a lot of projects. So, you know, the best way to see what's going on now is to just obviously take existing conditions counts. You can do it manually by someone being out there. You can throw down a TR strip, right? Whatever. I think the manual would probably.
And Aaron, we're talking about both incoming and outgoing of the church and school space as well as traffic on the road itself?
No, I think this is just the driveway coming in. Just coming off, so a point turn, like into the site.
Just a typical morning, typical afternoon.
So you went drop-off, pickup, and then some different one?
Yeah, like the, I guess, would we have the?
For sports and stuff?
What about Sunday with the church? Is that something that?
Well, that's an existing condition. It's not changing with this project, right? So that's why we didn't really think it would be necessary. Because this is like a, the school is a weekday situation. And the uses on the property, you've already kind of established, are kind of separated. You have the Sunday service, so the Sunday crowd is different than what you see on the school day.
I understand.
And we understand that. So, yeah. And if Lobella has questions, Tom, he can call my office and I can connect him with the folks who looked at this.
Yeah. Did I hear a third? I got a morning, I got an afternoon. Was there something?
Drop-off, pickup, and then?
No, then I suggested about the Sunday and hours.
Oh, okay, okay.
Weekday morning, PM, and school dismissal time. So the school dismissal would be like, what, 3 o'clock, 2:30, whatever that is. And then I guess the PM would be like the 4, like the 5:30 to 6:30 window if there's like a sports practice or something.
Sure.
That should do it.
Okay.
Again, if there's any questions, I can connect Tom with my colleague on that. Okay. So my other thought was, now that we have these two issues kind of getting somewhere, you know, between now and the next meeting, they can respond with whatever Steve can look at. We can get some additional information on traffic. Are you comfortable referring to the CAC? Maybe setting a hearing? Or you want to wait to see what comes of the CAC before setting a hearing and doing a county referral? Those are still two items that need to happen.
I mean, normally, we don't set this public hearing until we've heard from the CAC. Isn't that correct? And we don't usually.
When does the CAC meet next? Or, sorry.
So if, well, you might be able, but you're not going to be able to read the materials and, yeah.
Normally, happens the meeting after with the CAC. Report comes into you from us, and then you decide at that meeting.
Yeah, I always thought there was a lag.
You've got 62 days.
So yes, I think we, tonight, we refer to the CAC. And then we put it on again for a workshop, and then?
Request comments by June?
Yeah, by the next meeting.
They can work on responding to these two items.
That should give you enough time to work with Steve.
Yeah, that works. So should, as far as regarding the plantings, you want me to reach out to Steve?
Yeah.
And actually, we'll confer back and forth with that and recommend.
Feel free to. The board should approve that, but I think it's fine. You can reach out to Steve directly, right?
Yeah, he'll come up with something that sure will be fine with. You know, he's done it before.
Do we need to be on the schedule next month?
Well, if the CAC is going to report to us, wouldn't they?
I guess. And then if we want to see their drawings, the planting plan.
I think it just helps to move it along.
So the, yeah, the submission deadline, let's talk about that real quick. So it's the 6th. It's going to be the 23rd, I think?
That's two weeks before the 6th?
Yeah. So three weeks from today. If you can get in, you know, the planting stuff, the, any response from Lobella by the 23rd.
Move as quickly as they can.
Then we can have time to review that before the 6th. We can have time to review the CAC's comments by the 6th if they have them, and then.
And the goal, with the goal, that you would then be on the July calendar.
For a hearing, yeah.
Yes.
If you shoot for that, that would be great.
I think next month, when, or if we do put it on for public hearing for July, I think we should notice the surrounding counties that have interest or the towns that have interest.
Clinton, Stanford, yeah.
I think we should formally notice them.
I know Clinton's following this. Where they've sent representatives to meetings in the past. And I think it's on, I think I saw it on their agenda as a discussion item. So they're following it, so.
They don't have a wetland issue.
They don't have any approvals on this because the plan now shows that the issue that would have brought them in is if that access road was going to touch the buffer that's close to them. That's not happening anymore. So they're really just interested because of their proximity.
Traffic issue, they would then raise that from the beginning.
I would say it would be nice if Kristen sent them, sent them up the notice and then we put in our files that, hey, we did our job. And maybe people who rebutted the parcel under concern were not fine.
We'll make sure that happens. So they commented on the traffic. Their response on traffic came on your notice of intent to serve as lead agency that went to them way back. That's where they raised the issue of their wanting to see traffic. So it's likely that's going to be repeated at the hearing. And hopefully, by then, we'll have Lobella's info and our review of that to make them feel comfortable.
Yeah.
I'll move on to ask, so I'm seeing that Tuesday, July 4th. So what's the, what is the actual date going to be for that meeting?
I don't have my computer, so I don't have the calendar.
Would it be the following Tuesday?
July 11th, you said?
July 11th, okay.
Point of order here. The way it normally used to work is the CAC doesn't meet until after the planning board. So we can't actually discuss all this online. We have to have a meeting. And then you get the report. So you would meet next month. We would meet afterwards. And this final line is what we're going to send to you. And then you, that puts you, the planning board, into August.
There's no way that you can have something for us by next month?
This is a point of order. What do you want to do with this?
But Howard, we're going to meet and discuss tomorrow.
He doesn't have the application in. I mean, yeah.
Well, his wetland application is in, and.
I haven't seen one. Have you seen a wetland application?
Came in for the deadline for this meeting.
Yeah.
It was sent around by Kristen.
I'm sure it was sent around.
Yeah. So we get the wetland application, but we can't write the report at that meeting normally. That's the way it's normally has worked in the past.
So we got the three weeks up until the deadline for an issue.
That means we have to have a special meeting. Because we can't write, you can't write a report online with different members. You have to have a meeting to write the report and go over the report as a group and finalize the report. That's what we've always done in the past. They sit in the room. Everybody looks at the report at some point, and they finalize it.
So April 14th is when Kristen circulated the application.
But to Howard's point, they were not yet told that they were referred to them. So I can understand that they wouldn't have started working on something that hadn't been referred to them yet, even though they're on an email.
Is that, is that feedback contingent on your final decision? I just feel like it's unfair of someone who you call into August. I feel like it's unfair also. So not my college audience, audience suggestion that, you know, the CAC could perhaps discuss it tomorrow and then take the next month to issue or feedback or the, or the pen with? Do you think that's possible? Is that, is that out of?
This is really a two-month wait. Is it two months? I'm not sure why, how the inner workings of the CAC go. Why, if you discuss it tomorrow, that nobody can write a report in the next three weeks after that? That doesn't seem to make sense to me.
A person shouldn't be able to come in from the planning board and the earliest we can get them on is two months from now. That seems unreasonable.
Unless we have a special meeting.
Well, then I think maybe you need to have a special meeting if that's how, because I don't really see how it works otherwise.
Of course, we did that for the Rennet Pool. Remember the Rennet Pool project? We had to have a special meeting to get her done within a month because she had a contract or something. I don't know what it was. But we had a special meeting to finalize that. She didn't show up. That's the way it's always been done.
Is the only thing that's pulling this, pulling it up is the setting of the public hearing? That's correct?
Oh, it needs a county 239M that we can do also. But yeah, it needs a hearing for site plan and wetland. We could do a combined hearing to cover wetland and site plan.
So Howard, I think it'd be a good idea to have a special meeting because he's been here for five months.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that. I said you do have special meetings.
Seven months. He's been here for seven.
They've made a tremendous amount of changes to the site plan.
They're being very cooperative and.
Our ideas and our criticisms. And they've really come a long way. And it's, as reflected in our comments here tonight. So we would like to see shows.
No, the special tomorrow. I'm pretty sure they'll be accommodating. Tomorrow is right over there.
Okay.
Special. But, you know, procedurally, you just can't jump around one way or another. You have to have a meeting.
I understand.
And it has to be followed every time this happens, if necessary.[1671.06]
Well, then maybe we should look at offline, separate from this, look at our procedure, because if the procedure causes us to push something out two months from the time when the, when the community member comes in front of our board, I think that that's, we could do better than that, probably. If that's the, if that's the procedure that's in place right now, I think we could do better.
For you, but I'm just pointing out the technicality. Maybe the wetlands report has to be submitted for our meet, our first meeting tomorrow, an earlier date still. I don't know. I think we discussed it. The people have at least two weeks ahead of time, and they could be able to discuss it tomorrow. We can't discuss this tomorrow. In any length of time, we could discuss it, but not in detail, because we're just seeing it.
Okay. Again, we will discuss this further another time. I agree, Nicole. But for now, you're going to make every effort to get us a report before the next meeting, and we'll just go ahead and.
Well, that's fine, and we have to get this at least, I'm going to say, two weeks ahead of time, at least, the R members. We're going to have the special meeting. You have to see it before the special meeting. Am I explaining the practicality of this?
But you do already have, the wetlands application is available for you to give out to all of your members now. You've had it. It's in your emails, so that's not something that's holding you up.
If Kristen sent it out, we've all seen it. We've, I forwarded all the emails, so I'm pretty sure it's there.
You sent the wetland application?
It's been, it's been online for everybody to be able to view and see.
Yeah, I have it dated in my incoming folder as 4/14, so that's when I got it from Kristen. That's the date of the email that she sent around, and it included the application and then their latest plan that Steve looked at.
So that's been two weeks.
Yeah. So, but there is a problem with the dates, with our meetings being so close together. It doesn't really make sense how that falls, so we'll have, maybe, I don't know, I don't have an answer, but we'll, we'll think more about that. Okay, all right. So I think we're ready to go ahead.
It might be helpful. We've had a number of cases recently where there we've asked for plantings, you know, around wetlands. I think it's probably still available. I don't remember the name of the house that had the enormous rock.
I was just going to mention that. That was the one that was performing that.
What was the name? Yes, Clark Wolf.
Yeah, I believe it's probably still on the website, because that was a plan that was.
What's the name?
Clark Wolf, or Wolf Clark.
Wolf?
Wolf Clark. Those are two names of the owners.
Yeah.
And their planting plan should still be available online.
Very similar situation.
So we're not saying that you should do what they did, but at least what they.
It's an idea of the native type of plant.
Framework of, some ideas and stuff like that.
Steve recommended the same thing, the no-mo thing around the water and the planting.
That situation was a pond, not a stream, but similar.
Same idea. Okay, we'll look into that. I'll give Steve a call. Traffic stuff.
Okay.
Information in by May 23rd.
Yeah, we need a formal motion for referral to the CAC. I get a motion to refer. And seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, this is an unlisted action for seeker. So do I need to make a motion?
No, it's already been made.
It's already, that's already done.
That's been declared.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that was in the past. I, it's the Duchess County referral for 239M.
If you feel that what we have now can, is ready to go, and includes this latest plan, the, both applications, site plan and wetlands, I can work with Kristen to make sure everything, all the documents are together, but.
I think we have sufficient.
The ZBA did a referral and got a pretty quick response on the variance for the height, so, yeah, I think it's fine to get that going now.
Okay, so can I get a motion to refer this to the county, because it's within 500 feet of a road?
So moved.
Seconded?
Nicole, second.
All in favor? Now.
You could ask for waivers for some of that, on that wetlands report. You notice that at Section 10, I believe, and on, there's a whole bunch of things that may not apply to you. Technically, you're supposed to fill them out, but you can ask for a waiver, and the planning board can accept the waivers. They're saying, I'm not saying it applies or not, even soil types, for example, is one, and there's one about flooding. So you could just say, I want to refresh the waiver.
Yeah, I tried to give as much available information as possible. I even took it further to contact Army Corps of Engineers, you know, DEC. So I wanted to open it up to be able to be as transparent as possible and try to do the best we can to make the project work.
Try to make it easier for you, let you know that you.
Well, he's already done his application, so you'll have to see what he.
Okay, fine.
It's pretty thorough submission.
Most of that stuff probably would be not necessary anyway in that latter section.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't think we have anything else.
Just one other thing to add, and I did bring over to town of Clinton the traffic report as well. So they do have that on file as well. And what I can do is follow up with Lobella and get that report and bring that also over to them as well, so they have that as well.
Yeah, maybe even, you know, well, maybe when we set the hearing, you can make sure they see all our comment memos to date. But if you want to send them what we provided to you for Lobella to address, then you can send them that, too.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's it.
That's it. Thank you very much. Great work with you guys. Really appreciate your, all your time and effort into this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody have any other item that's not on the agenda? No? Okay, can I get a motion to close? Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor? See you next month.
Thank you.
Tonight was kind of funny with the ins and outs.